Call the regular meeting of the sign going to order. See tonight are five regular members. Tim Filbert, Gordon Young, myself, David Russell, Fred Dyckman, Lynn Conway, and our alternate Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, and Gary Bell. Minutes?
I approve the minutes.
Yeah, we can hold this motion to speak in the mics.
Second motion.
Any discussion?
They look good to me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
You vote?
Abstain.
Linda's saying, Linda abstain.
Sure, the first item here is under Commission Reports, item 5B. Consideration of a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that a town meeting be held to gather resident input on the issue of allowing adult-use cannabis establishments as per Connecticut Public Act 21-1. As we talked about at the last meeting, the state law has changed about legalizing recreational cannabis. So towns have to decide whether to allow them, regulate them, or prohibit them in town. At the last meeting, it seemed like the consensus of the Commission was to recommend that the Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing or a town meeting or some sort of public meeting or referendum to get the public's issue on this. So as per the first selectman's request, this is on the agenda here. The idea being that the town, selectmen would schedule a town meeting to possibly schedule a referendum.
It takes a lot of our hands.
Yeah, it gets a wider range of voices here.
So if it is approved, then we'll have to come back to the Commission, decide where it can be.
Right, right.
So.
And I know selectmen's drunk this year also.
Any questions on this? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
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 Administrative review?
Administrative review, item 5D1. 21-210 ZONDDH Hotel Mystic LLC. S. Loyakis. A zoning permit application for a food truck festival with 20 trucks at the Mystic Hilton on Saturday, August 21st, 2021, with the rain date of the next day. Property located at 20 Coogan Boulevard, Mystic. Assessors map 164, block 4, lot 1A, zone TC80. Well, first of all, is there anyone here to represent the applicant on this? So maybe we should, you know, just hear their summary of it.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies.
Can you speak in the mic, please?
I say, hi, how are you, gentlemen and ladies?
Good, thanks.
Wait a minute, we're recording this, that's why we have to. I have a question to ask Keith to start with. Do we need a zoning permit on this?
Well, we usually don't. You know, it's on our agenda, but you know, for single special events, we often don't have a zoning permit. The Commission did approve a zoning permit for a food truck rally for Mystic Aquarium about six years ago. This was reviewed and approved by the Police Commission last week, who didn't have any issues with it.
This one has been.
This, this one, yeah. They usually are the group that reviews special events, you know, because they have more expertise in public safety and, you know, the sort of requirements.
It's all gonna be in the Hilton parking lot?
Yes, sir. Yes, in the back part of the parking lot.
And the hours are?
From 12 to 7.
12 to 7. So all during daylight?
I'm sorry, yes, yes. We do that specifically so that we can get everything cleaned up prior to sunset.
Is this a one-shot deal? It won't be once a month or?
That, well, we'll be coming back. I mean, if all goes well, but yeah, for this location, it's.
Won't be once a month, but maybe annually.
However, we do have them on a once-a-month or once-even-bi-weekly basis in different towns throughout Connecticut.
Oh, this is like a group thing?
Yeah, it's new to the food truck fest.
And it's just food trucks? It's not music or anything like that?
Yeah, we have a live band. Yep. They have a live band there every Friday night, I think.
But this would be an outdoor live band?
Yeah, they have an outdoor one every Friday on their band night.
Yeah, they have a band night in the courtyard in the back typically.
Oh, the Hilton?
Of the Hilton, but yeah, okay.
It's just classic 80s rock and roll.
How's the parking segmented? How you segmented hotel parking?
There is, do you have the zoning site plan or no?
I do have a site plan.
Okay. There are two entrances. The left entrance on Coogan Boulevard will be used for the hotel parking lot. In that area in the front will be hotel guests. The other entrance on the right-hand side, that right-hand side parking lot will be used for food truck fest.
So you've done this before? Has that parking lot been added with?
Not there. This is the first time having one there.
Do you have any way to accommodate?
It looks like a few hundred people so far.
But most of the hotel guests, not there, most of the hotel guests are not there during the daytime.
No, they're not. I mean, if, but we don't want, at the same time, we don't want to take up their spaces with people attending the food truck fest for when they return.
How about traffic? So that's a pretty, on that, on like a, you know, weekend during the day because of the retail in the back and whatnot, it's pretty heavily, heavy traffic right that area.
I think the entrances in Coogan Boulevard, not from.
Macquarie's?
Macquarie's.
It's coming from Coogan Boulevard.
There are actually two. One is on Coogan Boulevard and the other one, as you enter that road that goes up to Macquarie's, it's right there as soon as you get there. It's right on the left.
And then you have the other one crossing the Seaport right?
Right, right. And we'll be utilizing both of them as an exit.
There's a signal right there, so the signal does appear gaps, gaps around. And I also know they have a crossing party for the Mystic Seaport over the weekend or a messing board party for the aquarium over the weekend. Did you talk to them about the people park over there?
We're actually gonna have staff there as well also.
In addition to there being a button on there in the event that nobody is there for whatever reason.
Okay.
Yeah, my only, my only concern, and I personally, I think it's worth a try, but I think if the traffic does become an issue going past that one entrance to the Hilton as you go up to Macquarie's and whatnot, you know, it might be something you want to monitor. Yeah, yeah.
I have a question. How long are you planning this again?
A couple, couple of months.
This one's actually, this one's actually.
Why, what happens at four days before the event we decide we don't wait up much?
Well, that, this was sprung on us. I mean, yeah, we, we got a notification just the other day. I mean, and nobody notified us prior to this. So we've been scrambling. We've, you know, visited the town hall and the fire station and all Mystic, and we've spoken to them. So we're just trying to get it all done.
To follow up on Lynn's question, how are you gonna prevent people from ending up at Quay? Or West Marine? I mean, what are you gonna do about directing people off of?
You mean signage?
Well, most of the advertising that we've done as, as we've gone along is to make a day of it for the patrons of the old Mystic Village shops as well as the aquarium to come out and make a day of it. Come to the food truck festival, go across the street to the Village shops and the aquarium. And that's most likely where most of the people will be coming from, which is why we're having a cross guard there at that crosswalk.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you. Let's see, we don't have any say.
Do we have to vote?
Yeah, they did apply for a zoning permit, so.
Well, they did.
Take a vote? I have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Next time, a little more notice.
Right, right.
Now, if you're just talking or calling, we'll change this.
And yeah, you're all welcome to come on out too. It's gonna be a good time.
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Notice of public hearing pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut revision in 1958 and all amendments thereto and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pocatuck, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following applications. First off, PZ 2118 SUP Latizori Development LLC, Refined Med Spa LLC. A special use permit application to permit a medical spa aesthetic medicine office in 1,020 square feet of existing structure. Property located at 80 Stonington Road, Mystic. Assessors map 153, block 3, lot 1, zone GC60.
Seated tonight's public hearing are five regular members. The way the public hearing will work, we'll hear from the applicant first and all those that speak in favor of the application. Then we'll hear from anyone opposed to the application and any general comments on the application. And after that, we have a right to, the applicant will have a right to rebuttal, and then we'll have the staff comments. So who is here from the spa?
Hello, my name is Kayla Cangemore. I am going to hopefully be the owner of Refined Med Spa. Do you need this to go down?
Sheesh, short.
This is one of my handyman, Mark. Unfortunately, the co-owner Mario Castro, who is a police officer, was called into duty and was unable to be here tonight.
So tell us what you want to do, please?
Okay, so I am looking to open a medical spa at the facility listed at 80 Stonington Road. This is a facility where I hope to bring increased confidence, but as well as a relaxing place to people. I am a nurse practitioner in primary care. I'm currently a primary care provider in Norwich, Connecticut. I also teach nursing school in Rhode Island in clinicals. Hence my attire, I'm sorry, it came directly from there. I have a background in ICU nursing and ER nursing, and I truly love healthcare in general. So I'm looking to just broaden the scope, and this is a field I never in a million years thought I would be into because I really like treating the very sick people. But with the way things are going in insurance and lots of things, I'm looking into a new avenue. So I have become trained in aesthetic medicine and have some very good colleagues that are going to help me in this venture. So we are simply looking to do things such as medical-grade skincare, facials, botox, potentially fillers and laser-type treatments. Nothing super invasive, it's mainly non-invasive procedures. I will be the medical director as I have independent practicing authority in the state of Connecticut. I've been a nurse practitioner for four years. And that is pretty much it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions at this time?
Yes.
So what type of signing, signage are you thinking about?
Signage for the spa itself? So just a small sign that will be located where the old sign was. I believe it was Coldwell Bankers, maybe prior. I'm not positive of what it was. But as the plaza sits, each facility there has like a small sign under two lights. So our space has like an overhead light outside, and we're just gonna put a small sign there. I'm not positive that there is a sign directly into the plaza with the name, but if anything, it would just be a small in collaboration with whatever everyone else is doing there.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Well, I think, are there any bathrooms? I don't see where.
So there's actually a common area bathroom that is only for the people who rent the space, I'm told by the landlord. And per the guidelines, because these procedures are going to be very short and the, there's only going to be four medical rooms, so this building will have to be altered slightly inside of our 1,000-square-foot space with four rooms. So we won't have more than maybe four patients there at a time in which they're maybe be there 15, 20 minutes. So in the event that they truly need a bathroom, they'll be able to use the common area, we've confirmed, but it won't be likely that they'll need bathrooms while they're there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Fred, is your mic on?
So the space is basically a rectangle, as you probably see on the layout. So we are going to have four treatment rooms. Because of the nature of the different treatments, it'll be best to set it up as such. Just like a doctor's office, you would have multiple rooms. There will be myself as a provider and probably one nurse and one esthetician in there, so there potentially could be three people there at one time.
Who, I assume someone regulates this business? Who would it be?
So that is basically regulated through the Department of Public Health, which deals with obviously the licensing and, you know, being up to code with the CDC standards and HIPAA and OSHA regulations and things like that. And that comes more so down to the credentialing and licensing and the medical abilities that I have that it will fall under me in a malpractice policy and such.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. John?
Just a question for Keith. Is there enough information in the application regarding the sign that they think it was approved? They don't have to come back again for the sign? I'm just trying to think of, you know, anticipating this to be approved. If there were any we could help them out with the stipulation, you know, that it be the same size as the existing sign or something a lot of those times for them to have, they don't have to come back just for the sign.
Right, and the sign can just be approved by us in-house. And this, this development did have along with it a multi-tenant signage program when it was built that showed where all the signs are, how big they're supposed to be. And that makes it easy to just figure out what's approvable there and what can be replaced.
Thanks, I have another question.
If you look, it's in, if you look, it's, the sign board is in the second picture in there.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Is anyone opposed? Any general comments? Keith?
Yeah, zoning-wise, it's very straightforward. I mean, we consider it a medical office because it does have this medical component, so it needs a special use permit in the GC60 zone. But, you know, there's no zoning issues with it. It complies with the regulations. There's a lot more parking on-site than zoning even requires. There's a large parking lot in back too, which you don't really see from the street. It's one of the few things that's not subject to the WPCA's moratorium in Mystic, so they won't be held up by that. And, yeah, there's not even any recommended stipulations for it. Just a vote as to the waivers requested and the special use permit.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote? Do I have a motion on this application?
Motion to approve the application.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That includes the waivers and the SUP. And do we, and the signage? I mean, is that gonna be handled internally?
Yeah, yeah, it's not really needed.
Yeah, no other discussion.
Any further discussion?
Not for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, seven, ayes.
Does that mean I don't get to ask questions?
That's right.
Okay, that's fine, gotta do it.
Next two, you go home.
Number two?
Number two.
Number two.
The next two applications. Fred is gonna refuse himself because he's friends with the applicant. So to be seated on these two public hearings will be, moves up. Gary?
You see, the second application, PZ 2119 SUP, Macduff Associates Mystic Oil Restaurant. Special use permit application for change of use from retail restaurant to restaurant with 45 seats, on-premise liquor permit, and shared parking. Property located at 35 Williams Ave., Suite E, Mystic. Assessors map 161, block 14, lot 2, zone LS5.
Will the applicant come forward?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm Shuli, Shuli Solomon, owner of Mystic Oil. So I applied for the liquor permit and 45 seats. Right now, I have only eight-seat permits. So which is not, like, I cannot make my rent either with eight seats. So if this 45 seats will be really good for me and liquor permit as well, it's needed in Mystic, so. And I get today email from the police department. They said they want to, what I'm gonna say, a clearance or, like, they want to see the more clear parking idea. So I have, you can see in my file, side layout A. You can see a lot of parking we have. And the dinner time, most of stores closed there. Only Mystic Oil is open and Taste of India Restaurant is open. But Taste of India, they are takeout business. So I'm only one person for the parking I need and for the seating.
Well, did the Police Commission suggest you have a signage out back, right?
Yes, we will make the sign, additional parking. It's going this way, so we will do that.
Can you access that from Avery Street? Or is it just from Route 1?
Just from, just what I'm gonna say.
Williams, that?
Next to the Taste of India.
That's the only, that's what I thought.
Yes, yeah, just only one access.
Right, thank you.
What are your hours?
Hours is nine, sorry, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Sunday is 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'm just a little confused.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is for the plaza that has the Taste of India, the dog grooming, the hairdresser. You go around the corner.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And your, your space is going to be where in there?
Before the saltwater cabinet, you know, the box store, just before that. Like, you can say, if you think about the corner, I'm the second one.
Okay.
There used to be a.
Into, away from Route 27, so on Avery.
Route, well, it's Route 1.
Sorry, sorry.
But it's where the organic store used to be.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
And you're thinking 45 seats in there?
Yes, ma'am, I want outdoor and indoor 45 seats. Not only out, indoor, ma'am. It's indoor plus outdoor.
Total?
Yes.
Total is 45.
Total is 45, yes. Yes.
That's what I thought.
How many indoor? Again?
Indoor is 31. 31 seats going to indoor.
And you're saying you need how many parking spots for?
Employees, four.
Well, we've had this discussion in the past about employees and the number of seating. And it does vary depending upon type of restaurant it is. But I don't believe four, according to the research that Chuck did, is standard for 45-seat restaurant. I think it's closer to 10. Eight, eight to 10. So I think you've miscalculated that a little bit.
It's a hard. It's international fusion cuisine.
So is it, is it considered like fine dining or something?
I don't know.
Sorry?
I've been in the restaurant, no, I told you something. Also, it could probably be, the requirement would probably be lower.
Less.
Right, right.
How many employees you have?
Right now, we are two.
Now you have two employees.
Two, just me and my husband, that's it.
But how many, how many seats do you have?
Right now, eight.
Right, so we're going.
Well, if you have to cook and one to serve, so you're basically, you only expect two more employees.
Yeah, that's why I said four total.
I can see that.
Would that include waiting staff and kitchen staff?
Everything together. Yeah, it's four is fine, four is fine. No problem.
Any other questions at this time?
So, and your restaurant is, you're proposing that your restaurant is opened when?
Sorry?
The hours of your restaurant?
Hours is 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Most of the store, that time already closed. You know, they close 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock. So I am only one person who is open until 9:00. Taste of India is a takeout restaurant. If you see in, yeah, the side layout, you can see Taste of India, takeout restaurant.
Yep, I saw that. And what's your plan for lighting for the outside?
Outside, just solar light, that's it. We don't need that much lighting there.
You have outside seating now.
Eight, yes, we have eight. So whatever, we get the permit, so we, everything keep outside. Didn't keep anything inside.
Any other questions at this time?
I have one. Do you expect to pay people, the customers, for one time?
No, no. We thought, okay, let's, it's a COVID time. We open it. If situation going good, if I'm busy, then I'm gonna apply for the more seats. Now, it's, my customer is really good. They like my food in Mystic. And our lot of customers, they come from another state as well. So when they come, they're like 10, 15 people, like today. Today, 20 people, they came from the New York. They tried to eat our food. We refused because we don't have seats. We have only eight seats. They were so disappointed. No, no, no bar, just beer and wine.
Any other questions? Thank you this time.
Thank you.
Anyone like to share? Anyone like to, sales like to speak in favor of this application?
Sorry?
I'm asking if anyone else want to speak in favor of this application?
And there are, there are signup sheets at the back table, if anybody wants to speak on, on any of the public hearings.
Is anyone opposed to this application? Are there any general com, any opposed?
No, general, general.
General comment?
General comment, Paul Sardar, 12 Jackson Avenue in Mystic. I can't say, I couldn't be opposed, because I don't feel I know enough about it, I didn't really study it, but when I, when I saw, when I saw your, your agenda, I saw these two restaurants, and they're back-to-back. I served on, I live at 12 Jackson Avenue downtown, I served on the Joint Task Force Groton and Mystic for the Parking Commission, the Parking Study. And I'm just concerned, I don't know if anybody from that neighborhood is here. My main theme when I come to planning and zoning seems to be now, is in my mind, is, is I just hope that you folks, I plead, that you do everything you can, and I know this sounds maybe stupid, but that you really stick to the regulations and don't give. And I know by, by the regulations, sometimes you can't, so this is a, maybe it's a moot statement that I may, I may make, but it seems like you do have some latitude, depending on the regulations, to give ten percent, not give ten percent, extra parking, that type of thing. And when I see these back-to-back permits, I'm assuming the restaurant's going to be successful, and there's going to be a lot of people that are going to want to go there because their food is great, and they say their hours are till nine o'clock or eight o'clock on Sundays, but the law, the state law says they can be open longer, and nothing stops really Taste of India from being open longer. All I'm saying is, I hope you'll look at what the maximum, what it could be, and not necessarily what it's presented as, and that you'll, you'll keep an eye, and I know you've been very sensitive, and I appreciate it, to the neighborhoods more now, as to how this overflow parking is going to happen, and it will flow into the neighborhood. I don't live there, I'm just pleading that you guys do everything you can to stick to the letter, and, and hold applicants accountable, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other general comments? Keith?
Sure, so, when the rest, when the Mystic Royal is approved, they're approved as a retail restaurant, which doesn't need a special use permit, it's permitted similar to retail, they're allowed eight seats or less there. So now they're looking to become a restaurant, which needs a special use permit, so technically, the special use permit's for three things, it's the added seats to become considered a restaurant, the liquor permit, and the shared parking relief. So if the shared parking is warranted per the commission, and if that's given, then the application would conform to the requirements of the LS5 district here. Now, most of this seems to be about parking. So, right now, as a stands, the, the whole shopping center technically has thirty-nine spaces and needs thirty-nine spaces per zoning. Although the outdoor seating that's there temporarily because of COVID takes up three of those spaces, so there's really thirty-six spaces, which per the COVID orders is, is okay for now. So, the shared parking regulations gives the commission the ability to reduce the total amount of parking required for all the businesses there, under the assumption that they share customers, or that they have different hours of operation. So what the regulations say is that, in calculating required parking, the commission can allow shared parking in cases where it's demonstrated that individual uses occupying the same property will have peak parking demands at different hours of the day, or expected to share many of the same customers. The regulations don't have a maximum percentage that you can or can't allow, it's basically up to your discretion to allow flexibility where you think it's warranted. As the applicant stated, you know, Taste of India closes by five, oh no, I'm sorry, I have that backwards there, only open for dinner, they don't open until four, all the other businesses close by five, five-thirty. Taste of India is approved for more seats, they could go up to fifty seats there, but I guess they're just, they're just takeout now, they were originally approved, it's a barbecue restaurant back in nineteen ninety-five. There's also four on-street parking spaces on Avery Street in front of the bank, and you know, those can't officially count as their parking spaces, but they're just overflow. You know, and there is that lot behind the building that's a bit concealed from view there. With utilities, this is subject to the WPCA's moratorium in Mystic, and they've stated that no increase in seats will be allowed at all at the restaurant until the moratorium's lifted, and we're not sure when that'll be, so if the commission approves this, it can't, the extra seats can't actually be implemented for a while until the moratorium goes away. If this were to be approved here, we have some recommended stipulations. Number one is standard language about the moratorium applying, number two is that the town's maximum seating notice must be posted in a conspicuous location inside the restaurant, number three, that one or more directional signs of four square feet or less in area reading additional parking behind buildings shall be installed on the applicant's property, and votes would be the waivers requested and the special use permit application.
Thank you. Any question members, have any questions at this time?
Do I have a motion to close the public?
Oh, and we, we didn't do rebuttal.
Oh.
I have some question. So, it's fourteen, they're going from, they're requesting, currently have eight outdoor seats. In the application, I think they're indicating up to fourteen outdoor seats. You said that the eight take up three of the current spaces, so if it was fourteen, would you assume that it would take an additional two or three spaces away?
Their plan doesn't show that. This shows them all fitting in those spaces, we can, you know, have them verify that here.
Okay, and Keith, you, you knew about the Taste of India and the fifty, the fifty seats, up to fifty seats. For the other establishments there, do you have any idea what the parking allocations were for them?
Yeah, you know, in the staff report, there's a breakdown of what each business needs per zoning. Taste of India needs the most, they need fifteen. The other businesses there need between three and six each, depending on how big they are and what type of business they are.
Okay, so let's say four each, just to be fair, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I am not sure. Actually, I think I saw in some old floor plan that there is a bathroom, it might be the case, as with the last application, where it's sort of a shared, common area.
The restaurant, I'm Jeff Wiley, I'm the property manager at Macduff. The property has its own, this restaurant has its own integral bathroom that is dedicated specifically to Mystic Royal, it's down the corridor, behind the office, to the right of where the seating area is, and it's a full bathroom, without shower.
And it's handicap accessible?
Uh, yes.
And I forgot to mention too, that submitted for the record was a letter in favor from co-owner Christopher Stewart.
I have one last question for the applicant.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, have you talked to the other tenants about parking in the building?
No, I didn't talk with them, but I see them, their operation hours.
Right.
Next to my, this is all over box, they never open, they just come to drop off and pick up their stuff, that's it.
Right, I've never seen anybody there either.
No, not at all, and seven, they just have, they take one for appointment, like appointment ones, so if they have appointment, they are open, and otherwise, they are not open. But after five class, nobody's there.
Right.
So only one right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes. Do I have a motion of this application?
Make a motion to approve this application with the shared parking, the liquor, I mean, as presented, excuse me.
Do I hear a second?
The stipulations.
With, yeah, with key stipulations, I'm sorry.
So as presented with stipulations, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
I will second that.
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so, I just don't think the math works here. So, first off, Kevin and company and the observations that were made are being made during a COVID state, right? So, you know, opening for appointment only is, I think, very common during this time, but I personally, because, you know, I've seen it, it, it's not, that, that place is open more often than just when they have appointments. But if you, if you go with what Keith said, okay, you start out with thirty-six, considering no increase in the number of outdoor seats, which is currently eight, they're requiring four, excuse me, fourteen. So let's just say that takes up, you know, three more spaces, okay? We don't have a site plan, I'm just saying, three more spaces. So now, you're down to thirty-three spaces. Keith indicates that the Taste of India, or Taste of India, has fifteen spaces, let's track that out, okay? So now, you're down to eighteen spaces. You've got four other establishments already there, each one requiring anywhere between three to six. I picked the number four, kind of in the middle, okay? So you've got Kevin Company, Fisher's, Salt Box, and Something Hound, okay? So that's, that's four, excuse me, four other spaces are establishments, four spaces for each one, that's sixteen, you only got eighteen left, so you have two additional spaces to work with. Now, you're correct, when you look at these hours of operation, right, there, there, a lot of them are open in the morning, and you're proposing to be open at eleven to nine, but there's a major overlap with each one of these other, other, others, people or businesses. So you've got a six-hour overlap, you've got a six-and-a-half-hour overlap, at Taste of India, you have a complete overlap. So you, there's just, you cannot justify the shared parking, and without the shared parking, you cannot justify the increase in seats. And I think Avery, that road, right, there's no sidewalks, it's a small side road, it's a residential road, I just don't think that the neighborhood can withstand that. So I, I think there's no way you can justify the shared parking and with that the increased number of seats that are being requested. When you look at the map, it's pretty black and white.
So, yeah, the total, total parking that would be required normally with all these seats is forty-nine spaces, and there's thirty-six spaces provided, so that's the level of relief they're asking for. The, the total amount of parking for the whole shopping center would increase by twenty-five percent.
Some of the places are never open.
But, but David, those, those clients can change their hours, the business can change without coming back to us, you, you can't kind of say that's the way it's going to be forever, and, and what's currently there doesn't work, I mean, the math doesn't work.
What number would you be comfortable with?
There, there, so, again, I'm just going to go through this, I, I don't see how you can even increase it at all. You've got, how many seats total? Keith, thirty-six, I believe you said.
That, how many seats or spaces?
How many spaces?
Uh, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, that's with the eight, you've taken out the spaces that the current outdoor seating of eight take up, right? So it's thirty-six available, including the eight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. The applicant is requiring, or requesting fourteen additional outdoor seats, so that's six additional outdoor seats, right? So you got to take, you know, three spaces for those six, just based on the ratio of eight spaces taking away three, okay? So that brings you down, as I said, to thirty-three of available seats. You said that the Taste of India has fifteen, or I say seats, I'm sorry, spaces, excuse me, the Taste of India has fifteen allocated to them, you said that, correct? Okay, so thirty-three minus the fifteen comes down to eighteen, now you've got eighteen available spaces. Then you have four additional businesses that are in that plaza, and I believe you said that those businesses require anywhere between three to six spaces. And so I just picked the number four, right, somewhere between three and six, I picked four. You've got four additional businesses, four times four is sixteen, you take the sixteen, you subtract it from the eighteen, you come up with two spaces. Then, so you could say, well, maybe that would work because of the overlap, but what I'm saying is, when you looked at the hours of those five businesses that are currently in the plaza, the overlap is more than fifty percent, for four of the five, it's more like seventy-five percent, and for one of them, it's a complete overlap, and that complete overlap is for the Taste of India, which is fifteen spaces. So the math does not work for this. It just doesn't work.
How does this sound? Twenty-five indoor seats and ten outdoor seats, and that is reduces it by ten.
No, that does not work.
There's thirty-five seats rather than forty-five seats?
Doesn't work. The math doesn't work still. The math still doesn't work.
Well, to be clear, they are, they are asking for relief from the math not working under the shared parking.
Well, that would, that would bring down the shared parking percentage, correct?
Right, right.
It would.
That's what I'm saying.
So do the math, do the math, Dave.
I'm saying is, it would bring it down. I would be comfortable with that.
How did you come up with that number? What is the math behind it? I mean, I wrote this down, no, I'd like you to present how you came up with that number.
Because it would reduce the number for all, but the maximum number of.
Okay, what is the number? Can you, can you black and white the number for me?
I'm not quick, I'm not quick on math. What you're saying is, if forty-five, how many seats do they need, or parkways we need?
Thirteen is the difference, right?
How many is parking? How many parking spaces does?
Total, well, you said it was forty-nine, correct?
Yeah, with the parking they asked for, the whole shopping center would need forty-nine.
Yeah.
Spaces.
But by reducing this by ten, it would, we're off. Even though we only have forty-nine spaces, the percentage of relief is not as high.
Right, right. Yeah, and the idea behind this is that, yeah, the math, I mean, the math doesn't have to work with shared parking. That, that's what they're asking for is to have more than is normally allowed. And it's just up to the commission's discretion how much extra.
I thought maybe it's ten spaces, ten seats too many for relief, this reduces it, so, that's all.
So I think, I think, David, I think you need to, or, I mean, for the commission to understand that, they need to go through, A, what the math is, and what is the percentage of relief? I mean, we're, we're allowed to give relief, is it relief for twos? Two, see? You know, two parking spaces? I just said that it's gonna be way more than that. So unless you know that number, I think it's hard to pull out of the air ten. Like, come up with a number and show what is the relief that we're actually granting.
I think that they need indoor seating for winter months. They can't, as they said, they can't have eight seats inside for them to be successful. Would always for everyone to be successful. We should come to a compromise on this.
That's all.
But what do you do when somebody else, when, when the space changes hands? Yeah, yeah. Well, then why is the restaurant open at eleven o'clock if they're not gonna be busy from eleven to five-thirty? And they close at nine, that doesn't make sense. So, you know. Yeah. So I'm just saying, I mean, you know, I think, I think it's in a tough area for street parking. I think that you're going to have street parking. And I think for the commission to justify an overlap, you have to understand what that overlap is from a percentage perspective of what's required for, for the zone, for the space. And I'm not hearing anybody come up with that.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion of this motion?
I think the shared parking could work. I rarely see this.
You think it would work?
I do. I go by this establishment very, very frequently, establishment meaning the entire building. And in my opinion, it's quite underutilized in general.
Gardner?
Fish market's never open.
Dog groomer, I mean, that's drop and go. I mean, you don't, you don't sit there in the parking lot, where your dog's being groomed, you drop the dog off and come back three or four hours later and pick the dog up. So, I mean, that's, you know, I just, I can't be too, I, I think, I like Ben, that property is not terribly overused, from what I can see, so I can't get too excited about it. And I say, you know, it's two-point-seven for the personal, for the pet groomer. You don't need two-point-seven for a pet groomer. Take the dog in, I'll see it, I'll see it in three hours, goodbye, and you go out.
They have two employees there. They have employees. And then they have multiple, they have multiple pets at the same time. So, I mean, again, I'm just asking the commission to justify the number so that there's some logic in this, rather than a gut feeling of, hey, I go by it and it doesn't look busy to me when I go by it. It's just, you know, where is the black and white information? I just went through and I, I explained it for the hours, the percentage overlap. I explained it for the number of businesses that are currently there. I explained it based on the number of required parking for those businesses. I explained it on the increased number of parking spaces that are going to be, that are being requested to be eliminated for outdoor seating. I've explained it based on somebody saying that they don't see a lot of people there because it's only open by appointment when it's COVID. I, I'm just not sure where the, other than, okay, it doesn't look busy and we want this business to succeed, I'm gonna draw out the number ten.
Okay.
I mean, where, where's the information?
All right, we call a motion. We can go on and on. All those in favor of this motion? Ben?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Gary? Lynn?
Aye.
Aye. Application approved.
Number three?
Number three, B, oh, three.
PZ two-one-two-zero SUP Macduff Associates Ignazio's Mystic LLC, specially used permit application for a restaurant with sixty-four seats and on-premise liquor permit, property located at forty-two Williams Ave, Mystic, assessor's map one-six-one, block one-seven, lot one, zone LS five.
Serious application, would be my, Ben Filbert, Gardner Young, myself, David Rasmussen, Lynn Conway, and Gary Bell. Applicant?
Hello, everybody. I'm Lewis Termini. I'm from Brooklyn, New York originally, but I spent most of my life in Connecticut. So I don't want you to feel like I'm a New Yorker sneaking in on you. We were in, we're a family business. We were in Avon, Simsbury, Glastonbury, Cromwell, Plainville, two sons, two daughters. I had a hundred-and-twenty-five employees, but I'm retired now, and the children are running the business. But I'm the brains of the business without any brains. So we, we'd like to switch over from retail restaurant to restaurant at Dunkin'. I'm open for questions. I could've brought a pizza from Westport, but we're closed on Monday, which will be closed on Monday here as well. Our hours will be eleven-thirty to nine, and... I'm ready to go if you'll let us go.
How are you? A lot of seats in that little space, huh?
We have three thousand square feet.
Three thousand square feet?
Yeah.
And some of the seats are outdoors, too, in the, in the outdoor patio.
I'm sorry? No, we won't be using the drive-through, cutting down on traffic. And I, I believe that the large parking lot that we have, shared by Enterprise, which maybe one or two cars come in, and the sandwich shop, two or three cars come and go periodically. And all those parking spaces, we probably use our legitimate amount and no more.
Just a note, I'm Doug Corey, I'm the contractor. According to the parking regulations, we fall within the parameters for parking based on the seating requirements that are being asked for.
Yeah, just specifically Wilcox thirty Stony Brook. Specifically, there's twenty-one designated parking spots. We're assuming of five employees, that's sixteen times four gives us sixty-four.
I'm glad you can do the math.
Any questions at this time? The takeout would, would not be abandoned, it would just be, what did we say, Keith?
Keith? Yeah, the, the property owners submitted a letter saying that they don't intend to abandon the drive-through use permanently, and drive-throughs in this zone for food establishments are no longer allowed. But state law revolves around the owner's intentions with something like this. So a drive-through could come back in the future.
However, the future for us in a twenty-five-year with option, option of, I, I will put in writing that we will not use the drive-through.
For twenty-five years?
We're there twenty-five years. We've been a success in Connecticut for thirty years. It was originally Luna Pizza in the other counties, and we're in Westport right now.
And you can use the old, the old drive-through for more parking, correct?
No.
No.
The drive-through really, that alleyway really doesn't lend itself. You'd be blocking.
You don't want people pulling out there.
Aggress from the existing lot.
Does, the sign is complying with our regulations, Keith?
Yeah, and it would just be replacing what Dunkin' Donuts had there.
One question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Does the rental car establishment, or cars around the corner?
Well, I haven't seen any cars there for months and months and months. I've been visiting, I'm moving into Mystic this month, and since January, I've been passing by the location. I have not seen more than one or two cars at, at Enterprise.
At Enterprise, we've designated spots as part of the total spot count, so they can have those.
Okay, so is that included in your calculation?
Yes, yes. Of the total spots, we're designated twenty-one of those spots, and that's.
Just in addition, I'm sorry, the Enterprise operation operates primarily out of the Gratten base, down by the, down by the Subway, I'm sorry, down by General Dynamics. That's primarily where they do business, they operate, this is a sub-location. So it's not really, you know, it's not constant for the cars.
Any other questions? None of the questions this time. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone oppose this application? Any general comments on this application?
Paul Sardar, twelve Jackson Avenue, a couple points. First of all, I'm sorry, you guys, clearly none of you live in town, downtown Mystic. You guys just, I'm the last one, I know it's over, you arbitrarily just picked a number, and it was, it was pretty disgusting to listen to, frankly, but that's passed. Enterprise, I rent cars from Enterprise for years. We're in a bad rental time right now. Cars are short. I have gone in there over the last five, six years, there could be anywhere from three to seven cars in there. My concern is not what is, just like any of these other uses. It's not what they're doing with it now, it's what they can do with it. Now, if the applicant says that they have allotted the number of parking spaces that required by zoning, I'm fine with it. But making up arbitrary thoughts and ideas, because again, you drive by or you think or someone says, oh, it's not being used all that much, that doesn't make any sense at all. Again, if there's a use in that space and someone else comes in and they buy right, can use more spaces. And, and I don't wanna hear, hopefully, that, well, they don't use that much, so the overflow is gonna go towards, and we're gonna pretend that we only have two employees or four employees, when we're really with a sixty-four-seat restaurant, we're really gonna have ten or twelve. It, it just goes on and on, and it's never-ending. And I know you guys only have so much, so much regulatory, actually, you've got amazing amount with your zoning enforcement officer. But this fudging and this pretending and this, don't worry about it, it, it's, it's just agonizing to watch and see and making things up as you go along. I, I would really just appreciate we, for once, just stick to the regulations and justify your, your motions. The last one, you come back to it, someone can come back to you and say, hey, you gave it to them, why can't you give it to us? Oh, just because, what's your basis? Well, we, you know, we don't think that many people use that space. What happens if, if, which will impact that whole neighborhood, if, if the Taste of India decides, somebody else buys that restaurant and decides to get active? And is open from ten in the morning until one AM, because they can by law. And this restaurant can do that, too. I really wish we wouldn't put so much weight on what, again, is happening and look at what can happen. Thank you.
I would like to say that I agree with my neighbor, and we'd like you to go by the rules. And we're, we want the designated spots that were allowed, and whatever Enterprise and Subway has, they're allowed. We're not asking to go beyond or, or around it, or maybe what they may be, may not be there, may not be open. We're not asking for that. We are asking to keep the cars off the streets in Mystic, which is out of control. So if we have our spots taken by those cars, there's less bumper-to-bumper on this. And Mystic is, and the, and the county, the area, is right now number one in the country. There's no stopping that. We're here to help get them off the streets, give them some good pizza.
Sorry, not to belabor the point, Wilcox thirty Stony Brook. Forty-two Williams Ave has forty-two total parking spaces. There's designated twenty-one of those spaces for the former Dunkin' Donuts, unit A. We've taken five away, that gives us sixty-four. There are thirteen designated spots for the Enterprise Rent-A-Car, with the remainder of the eight spots designated to Subway.
And you have eight parking spaces overflow on Allen Street.
I don't know what it says. Have you been to Allen Street lately?
Any other questions at this, anyone else like, any general comments? Keith?
Sure, so this, this application does meet the zoning requirements for parking. Unlike, unlike the last one, they're not asking for shared parking relief. They do have enough per zoning with the parking lot they have. Um, they do have enough per zoning with the parking lot they have. Dunkin' Donuts, even though it was a food establishment, was considered retail per our regulations, so that's why they're before you as a restaurant, and also the liquor permit requires a special use permit. And I think we talked about most of the other issues here. Dunkin' Donuts was open, had greater hours than them. They were open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and they had the drive-through that was open till 11:00, even though the speaker had to end at 10:00. The WPCA moratorium, the WPCA director said that because of the moratorium, they will be limited to only 25 seats until the moratorium is over. And the reason why, um, they're allowed more than the previous application is just because Dunkin' Donut, they're going by the flow of what Dunkin' Donuts used, so that equates to 25 seats, uh, yeah, 25 seats until the moratorium is over. If this application is approved, the recommended stipulations here are, approval subject to the WPCA's moratorium on increasing flows to the Mystic plant. Number two, the town's maximum seating notice must be posted in a conspicuous location inside the restaurant. Approval is for a maximum of 64 seats with 52 indoors and 12 outdoors. And number three, this approval is not considered a permanent abandonment of the drive-through use. And the votes here are the waivers requested and the special use permit application.
Does the office have any questions at this time? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both ayes, aye. Do I hear a motion on this application?
Make a motion to approve the application with the three stipulations.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Both, no. Application approved. That's on the agenda for tonight. Uh, before I leave, this is my last meeting, Gardner's last meeting.
I don't want to interfere, but I do, I'm Peter Stewart, and I want to say thank you to each of you who serve on this commission. It's a, it's a challenge, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm the McDuff, my partner Roland Duffy died a while ago, I've owned the property since 1978. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm going to welcome two new members of the commission, and our next meeting will be Ryan and Chuck. And if we're going to have to have an election of officers, but I think it's going to be Ben, so maybe I'll give this to him now. Do I hear a motion?
We're going to have that election now?
You can't, you can't, you can't. Okay, we can't, it has to be on the agenda, doesn't it?
Yeah, and it has to be, you know, all the new members seated.
Each one in.
Oh, okay, so we're going to have it in September.
Yeah, that's it. What's the, Keith, first meeting September canceled?
Uh, it could be, there's nothing really scheduled for that.
Cancel it. For my last decision.
All right, I guess we will.
Second meeting in September will be the organization meeting. That's right.
So we have time to come up with alternatives.
So I would like, I would like to say it's been an honor to work with you.
There are applications in for the new organs.
Are there?
Hey, thank you for, for everything you've done, Mr. Chairman. Both of you, uh, thank you so much. I'm proud of you, you're here, and I'm happy for you. Thank you as well.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Thank you very much. It's just, uh, you know, a lot of volunteer time and effort that, uh, you guys have put into this.
Always, David.
I know.
As much as you're going to miss her.
I'm going to, I'm going to help you with your math, don't worry, with your extra time.
I'll just try to do quick math.
Yeah, it, it doesn't...
New math.
Yeah. A number is a number. Okay.
So we're done.
I'm adjourned.
Can we insist on complete applications?
Have you?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
The meeting will go on for...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm adjourned.